Alrighty, so I am going to call this school committee meeting number 1,633 to order. Looks like 603 or 4, 602. Alright, not bad. And attendance here, we have Art Pataki, Jim Dennis, Bonnie, Jane and Nancy, and we have Jeff on Zoom. And Kara's coming in. Terrific, alright. Our other two members have let me know that they couldn't be here. Hi Kara, thank you for coming. We have a packed agenda, therefore I wanted to get going. I must say, I'm still in a good mood from the wonderful presentation yesterday. I hope that everybody
Okay, we're gonna represent it.
Yes, yes.
Nice Bonnie.
Yeah, it looks great on you. And I love your expression because he said, and maybe we can practice this. If we smile, we feel better and more positive, even if we're pretending.
Tried it a lot.
I actually tried it this morning and it worked very well. So, let's try to exercise that because the investment that we've made in that wonderful presentation needs to bear fruit. Alright, so we are called to order. We have blessedly no executive session today. I think we've done quite enough of those for the time being. And we have some minutes to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes of, I gotta go back to the first page.
August 10.
August 10, thank you Dennis, 2022.
And a second?
Second.
A second from Art. Does anybody have any corrections, additions?
I do.
Yes, thanks.
I saw a typo on board 11, the penultimate paragraph. It says Art Pataki inquired. I think it should be inquired. And I just, we had a, we tabled basically the discussion on the regional school district planning board. And then said it was gonna be at the end of the session. And we never went back and discussed it. I'm just wondering, does that need to be clear in the minutes that we never went back to discuss it? Or?
No, it was just tabled.
It was tabled.
It was tabled. Well, I mean, in our minutes, we said that it was, we were gonna address it at the end of the meeting, but.
Right, right. So, I think I said-
Should we change it to tabling instead of addressing?
No, I think I said if time allows, because we had so much other stuff to do. I think I left it open. Is that indicated?
It's not.
Yeah.
In that same section, now that you brought it up Jeff, I inquired, not inquired as well, twice.
Okay. So, let's see. Any suggestions on how you would like to see that?
I just think some syntax. So, if it's, I'm open to say, like, instead of saying we'll address it. I remember clearly saying we'll address at the end of the meeting, but we never went back and discussed it. So, I'm fine if the minutes reflect that it was tabled. To do that, it just, it sounds like, I just wanted to make it clear that we never went back.
Yeah, okay. So, let's go to-
But we didn't table there.
No, we did. According to this, what we should say is-
Just put if time allows.
Yeah.
At the end of that paragraph.
Yeah.
Okay.
That work, Jeff?
Yeah.
Works for me.
This was member districts item 8A, and then to provide input is the last sentence.
And then in parentheses, I would say if time allows.
If time allows. And we were pretty cooked by the end of the meeting. Okay. Any other changes? Very well, we can go ahead and vote on the minutes. Art?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
I wasn't present, so I think I need to abstain, correct?
Jane, yes, and Nancy?
Abstain.
Okay.
You didn't get Jeff.
And you know what also, since-
Jeff?
Yes.
Since Jeff brought this up in that first paragraph, you also inquired rather than in-
Yeah, multiple times, in all places, we're gonna change that.
Yeah, alright.
Okay, so enrollment numbers. So, our head enrollment person has not been with us this week, so we are going to have to pass over that one until next time.
Okay. Alright, so then we have miscellaneous correspondence, which is, has to do with the regional school district planning board request for funding. We can discuss that now, or we could discuss it under our regional school planning board section. Do you have a feeling about that?
Let's move to the, I suggest we move to the regional school district planning board section, unless there's somebody from the school district planning board. Like Lucy or somebody coming to speak to them.
I did not hear anything from her. I do not see anybody here.
Okay.
With what?
Unless it was public comment, there wouldn't be any speaking through, right?
That's right. If she could have done it in public comment, which is coming up, so-
Let's leave it where it is.
Should we do now?
No, let's leave it where it is.
Putting it to the, yeah.
Oh, in the agenda, in our usual agenda spot. Okay, great. Okay. I don't think we need a motion for that. I think that's fairly clear cut. Alright, do we have a student representative's report?
So, our student council for this year is not under way.
Okay.
And so, they're gonna do their election shortly, maybe tomorrow, that it's gonna be talked about. And so, we're hopeful for the next few months we'll have someone here to represent.
Okay.
Can you repeat that for us?
Oh, yes. The student council election is coming up soon, and when that is completed, we will have a student representative back again.
May I just follow up a question on that? Jane?
Yes.
Will that also mean, Jesse, that we'll have the people who will rotate in for our school committee meetings as a student rep?
We're hopeful, yeah. Yeah, that's part of their ballot of positions.
Great, thank you.
In leaderships.
And is there a student spotlight yet?
So, you want me to go first? Okay, so I'll just start. So, our intention today was to have Catherine May Cook here, who was, her idea for the T-shirts was one that we used and then modified a little bit. Her graphic design class with Carrie Giudano, when they heard about the T-shirt contest, decided to, the class made presentations on sort of what they thought the design should be. And so, Catherine was attempting to get here tonight, and you know, when she left school today, said she was gonna try to get here or come online. Since she's not here, we still wanna recognize her because the T-shirts are important. It starts the school year off nicely on Friday. We had a whole bunch of kids wearing to school. I'm sure you've seen the picture that Carrie Giudano put on our school website.
It's on the banner.
We'll have to-
Yes, definitely. It's unrotten.
Yes. And this could be the time going back.
This is it. This is the big moment. This is the moment. So, nice wrapping, Jeff. Yes, thank you.
Oh my God. Oh, I love the back.
Right?
That is fabulous.
It looked really nice when you saw that.
Oh, I'm gonna have so much fun wearing it.
So, it came out, it came out really nice.
Bold, Brazilian.
You can wear it to every meeting, you can wear it out publicly, you can wear it to fancy events like weddings, whatever you want.
I have-
You want our name out there as much as possible.
I have gold collar pants, I think.
Oh wow. I look forward to seeing that.
I came up with a strong word, ultimately, to support her.
So, Catherine had some similar words, and then as we discussed it more, we changed a few of them.
I loved it.
And so, she seemed to be okay with it.
Congratulations.
We will, yeah.
This is my favorite.
Yes, I have a bank account in case she was here, but we'll make sure she gets it.
I have an honorable alternative now.
Yeah.
We like the blue. The new blue's great, but everybody's probably got the gold.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, because, yes. I'm loving it.
So, Jane, also, we have a spotlight from the elementary, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Alright, alright.
Can I just say something really quick? There was a lot of crosstalks, it was really hard to follow, just so you guys could be aware of it. But, and also Jesse and Charles, my kids love their new shirts and they wear them proudly, so.
Oh, great.
Yeah, so pre-K has not, pre-K obviously had a stacked start. We start pre-K a few days later to give them a sense, you know, get activated to school, do a separate open house. So, we will have all the pre-K T-shirts distributed next week, and then we will encourage the kids on the first Friday of our spirit week upcoming to all wear the T-shirts again. So, I'll have another photo of the entire district in gold. Oh, and I told the elementary kids that it's yellow. I said, well, they're colored black. It's gold. And then just really briefly for student spotlight, I just wanted to let you know that we have now stopped collecting summer reading challenge entries for the elementary schools. That's all three schools. And we have a bunch of contestants, and tomorrow during the day, we're gonna pull out of a hat the winner, who will then get to be assistant principal for the day. And they will come and talk about their experience being a student.
Excellent.
All still responsible.
They're very cute. They wear the walkie-talkie, they do the whole spiel.
Yeah, we gotta get that.
We get, we get some photos.
Yeah. Okay, so now we are going on to public comment, and we have one public. And would you like to, thank you for showing yourself, and we appreciate your being here. We can go on to the business managers' report.
Yeah.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I have two items for you tonight. The first is the first warrant report for this year, which also has a number of kind of finished up.
Your sound. We don't hear you.
Uh oh.
There you go, that's better.
Now we do.
Wow.
Yeah, you're still in a vacuum.
Is it in our, it's on the last page of our packet?
Yeah. Oh, yes. We had a, we had a substitute packet maker, so I apologize.
It's alright. Thank you.
We might have to do a little bit of a-
Yeah.
Is this any better?
Try again.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, alright, so you have the packet in front of, or the report in front of you. It's a long report because we've basically had, you know, the end of '22 and then going into this first couple of months of FY '23.
Nothing unusual to report, you know, it's your usual expenses, whether they be, excuse me?
Just keep talking.
Oh, okay. Your usual classroom supplies, expenses, you know, MTRS. I can go through each one if you'd like. Or if there's any particular one that you might want to know a little more about, I can certainly give you some details on it. Kind of up to you, which would you prefer for this longer list?
I hear from the group.
What, I only see this short page.
That's a lot. That's a lot.
There are a lot of items.
That's a lot of items. Usually wouldn't have that many parts in one report.
So, what are these? Can you just, do they fall into a certain category, these larger quarter million dollar ones?
I can go through them line by line if you'd like. Like the 307,000 on June 1st as the bond payment for its total interest. Voucher number 1807 from June 29th was our Berkshire, Berkshire Regional Retirement Payment. The 1808 on June 30th was state and federal tax, and then a few miscellaneous expenses. 7002 on July 1st of '22 for $317,000 was health insurance and retirement payments. On 76, voucher number 703, $286,000 was Berkshire Retirement. Let me go to the end of July, 705 for $151,000 was mostly the, it was MTRS of $51,000, and then the, basically all of the insurance for the district. The property insurance, the liability insurance, which I'll be touching on after this, just to give you a heads up on. On July 30th, 707 for $13,000 was Berkshire Regional Retirement. The next two are kind of self-explanatory, health insurance warrants, so both of those were health insurance payments for the months of July and August. And then the vendor warrants. We had 1811 and 1810. Those were basically classroom instructional supplies, out-of-district spent tuition and transportation bills. Then we jump into FY '23.
We lost you again.
We lost you.
Excuse me?
We just lost you when you went to the 23.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me again now? Wow, that's weird. I'm sorry. FY '22, FY '23, 702, $71,000 is Chromebooks and general school supplies. We also had out-of-district spent tuition on, on the next one with some transportation bills. We had more spent tuition and general supplies on the September warrants. Then we had a couple of payrolls, just, you know, your basic payroll warrants of, for the month of July. That includes all of the administration, as well as the teacher salaries from FY '22 that are paid throughout the summer. And the last one is the P-card warrant from the end of June. That's just kind of the district credit card that has miscellaneous expenses that the, you know, the staff members either needed immediately, like some emergency hardware expenses, items like that. Sometimes companies won't take a purchase order, and you need to use a credit card, so we use the P-card for that.
Alright.
I'll make a motion to approve the warrant statement of today.
Second. Thank you, Nancy and Bonnie. Alright, Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Abstain. I don't have the attachment.
Alright, Jim?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Jane? Yes? Nancy?
Yes.
Alright. And are there any other?
Well, Chris, can I just, because your connection is crazy, I'm just gonna start a little bit, and then I'll let you finish, okay?
Sure.
So, we wanna bring something to the committee's attention that is being handled, but we don't just, you know, we, we're not just booking entries. We're always looking at the district and making sure that all of our assets are adequately secured. So, the business office has uncovered an issue, and we wanted to make sure that the committee was aware of it. It's being handled, but we wanna make sure that you also know about it. So, is that helpful? Go ahead.
Sure. Yeah, so when I was reviewing the insurance policies that we received from our agent, I found that the coverage for the high school and elementary school building was $30 million. Which, you know, if there was some kind of catastrophic event and the building needed to be rebuilt, $30 million was not going to cover the cost of the building. So, I did alert our insurance agent about that. He recommended that we get an appraisal done of the building so that we could adequately insure the property. And so, we signed a contract to have an appraisal come in. We have to pay for the appraisal, but I do think it's money well spent because we need to know that we have adequate coverage on the building. And they are working on scheduling it by the end of September. So, I just heard back from them the other day, and they said, they apologized for the delay. They had a lot of vacation time. So, they're looking to schedule it by the end of September. So, we'll get the building appraised, and then we'll know exactly how much insurance we will need to carry for the building. So, unfortunately, this will almost positively increase the amount of premium we pay, but I do think that, you know, we certainly need to at least have the coverage that it would cost us to rebuild the school if something happened.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chris, for bringing that to our attention, and we look forward to an update. Yes, Bonnie?
While having somebody come in, it hasn't been done in a while. Last I was chair, it hadn't been done. I think, looking over the entire insurance policy in terms of coverage, that there might be some shortfalls in other areas.
Okay.
So, rather than just bringing somebody in for one part of the contract, there are other liabilities that should be looked at to see if we have sufficient coverage.
But that's what, that's part of what we're doing, right? We do a risk assessment, make sure, so that's, that's what we're doing. This is the area, but this is the shortfall right now, that we know this, so that's why we're doing.
So, they went through everything, and this is where they sort of-
We go through and take a look at that and make sure of that. So, yes, but that's the point. I wanted you to know that we are always looking at-
Good.
Making sure that we have adequate coverages and, and not just, you know.
No, because I know you had picked up something a while ago, and I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, so, so this is the one that we really need to address right now.
I'm happy with that.
Great.
Or not happy.
Well, I understand.
Right. So, since this was stated as the fact that we were quote underinsured, you know, is there anybody done like an evaluation, or at least there's a swag on what this is gonna do to our budget?
We don't know yet. That's why we're doing the appraisal.
I mean, anybody done in like an estimate, or I mean?
We don't know until we do an appraisal. That's why we're trying to get that as quickly as possible.
We should know it.
But this is one of the reasons that, you know, you need to have a little bit of a cushion, because things like this are unanticipated, and you need to make sure that we make the appropriate adjustments.
I assume there's people who specifically do this kind of appraisal, so companies that we have rehired them?
Right, so that's who we just, we just contracted with.
Who are?
I don't know. I don't, usually don't say vendors out loud over and over, but it was recommended, and we signed the contract to do that.
It was left to make an buyer insurance agent. This is the company.
Fire insurance agents, yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions? Alright, we look forward to maybe beginning of October, we'll have-
We'll have an update.
We'll have an update and a decision of where the money's gonna come from. Okay.
Thank you.
Alright. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. So, I don't see any budget transfers this meeting, so we're going on to the business with district member towns, which includes an update on the regional school district planning board work and a request that we have in your packet for some funding. And I think Bonnie and Beth and I can possibly bring you up to date as to where we are now. And I don't have to hog the floor here if somebody would like to.
Well, unfortunately, we don't have either Laura or Danelle here, or other school committee members on that.
Because there haven't been, let's see, we didn't mention anything for August, so there was an August meeting of the full board, and there was a meeting last night of the education subcommittee, and their upcoming meetings for finance.
Another outreach meeting, so there's been several of those.
Yeah, I would say generally, it would be very helpful if people can go to the website and find out what meetings are happening, and in the areas that they have particular expertise, that if they tuned in, it would be helpful to us. The finances coming up, because we don't have the transportation report yet. And the finance committee just changed hands, so now John Silver, who's the head of that, and the operations changed hands, and-
Don, Pope? No, not Don Pope.
No, isn't it?
Nadine.
Nadine is head of that.
Nadine.
Hover, who's a select board member from Sheffield. So, this, I think one of the things you should know is they seem to be persevering with this fast track of the process, hoping that they can get this to the towns by May. And one thing I would like for Beth to bring us up to date on, she attended a meeting with the state officials regarding the timeline for what we, what we reasonably can expect to achieve. Would you mind?
I don't know if Jeff wants to, I saw his hand.
You have a hand up, Jeff?
Yeah, I just had a question. What was the reason for switching up the chairs of the subcommittees? There was an aversion to having leadership elections or changes.
Yeah, well, one person moved to back to New York. That was the head of finance. So, we lost Roger Kavonoff, unfortunately. And then George McGurn feels that there should be a rotation, as there are, so he stepped down because he, that's when the rotation happens in his town. So.
Okay, thank you.
So, I think I also wanna mention that at the opening days of school, we had a presentation by Lucy and Jake to the faculty that was held for about an hour plus. There's also a survey that has gone out to faculty and staff, giving them opportunities for follow-up or for participation in the upcoming visioning discussions, which is what we talked about last night. I think what you're asking me is, there's been some discussion about the rural aid, and it was mentioned at one of the meetings that-
23rd of August.
Right, that we weren't gonna be getting the same amount as was projected in the Rural Aid Commission Report, which I shared with all of you. So, I called the state and I spoke with Michelle Griffin, who oversees the rural aid, and she said to me, I can't tell you anything right now. I don't know. So, she said, all I can tell you is I will contact you as soon as I do know something, but she said, I would anticipate being in the same amount as last year. So, we received $70,000 last year, which is equivalent to about one position. My thoughts are, if you wanna know, I feel like we have been very aggressive with keeping the budget to a very low increase. I feel like we have used all of our grant funding from the state to replace the HVAC system so that the communities do not have to borrow. I feel like we used all of our excess and deficiency funding, almost to a point where some of our budget people are uncomfortable. And we have contributed our school choice funds, all of this to help the towns suppress their assessments. I personally would like to keep, if we get it, because it's not guaranteed, I would like to have a little bit of a cushion for things like, you know, potential hiring. We had one person leave whose job really has to be two jobs. We have this insurance situation. It's not an exorbitant amount of money. And I feel like the other thing about this is, if we don't need it, it will go back into our ENT and be certified at the end of the year. We will be contributing it back to the towns as part of, you know, our suppressing assessments for the next year. So, it's not a windfall, and we don't budget for it. We, we don't budget for it because we're not guaranteed that. So, when people are saying that we hadn't included it in our budget, it won't be in the operating budget, number one. It would be in the grants budget, and we certainly aren't going to report something that we might not do. That's right. So, so I just wanted to be clear so that everybody could know that, because I think there's been some confusion, and that's all I could get out of the state for right now.
Can you give us a sense of all, of what the response of the faculty and staff was to the presentation made on opening day?
Animated.
And the principals, well?
Well, this is, remember, this was just to the SB REA. So not necessarily.
Principals weren't there.
Not necessarily. Uh, but uh, I think that uh, I, I did the introduction. So that's why I was there. Uh, but I think um, there was some discussion that they felt that they hadn't been heard and that their input hasn't been valued or listened to. Um.
And they outright said.
They did. And um, Lucy said, uh, um, she stood up and she said, I feel like that's my fault and that, um, you know, that wasn't the intent, but um, I take that as a, as a fault on my part. She did say that. Um, they did say that they felt that there were going to be further opportunities down the road to do that and they wanted to hear the feedback and then they got a lot. I'm not sure I can go over every point, but there were a lot of concerns and uh, so uh, they said that they would um, come back and do this again, or you know, do some follow-up. But there were some excellent questions from, from our faculty and staff.
Can you?
They did send them.
Any, anywhere we.
I, they did, um, they were sent a survey uh, as to whether they wanted to stay involved and that was reported last night that there are five teachers for.
From our upstairs.
No, five from both schools together.
Oh, correct.
That teachers who are ready to get onto some active role. And then there are maybe ten others that want more information.
Oh, yeah.
But so how many teachers are there?
For the more us.
No, so if, so there were, I got a list of four that were us. Two up before wanted to hear more.
Hmm.
Two said they would like to hear more and would think about participating.
So, and that's a, uh, uh, I see.
Oh, yeah, no.
I just want, I'm just wondering about what's the total number of teachers that would have gotten that survey?
Well, there's ninety teachers.
Ninety teachers. Okay.
So, uh, the question that I have has to do with um, uh, with um, Lucy's response of saying, you know, yes, that's certainly my bad, that that's the impression that's being, that's been received on or experienced. Um, did it sound like the next step was to start to integrate the to actually structurally integrate the concerns that S B R S D is presenting to them or it sort of sounded more like it's going to be more of the same old, same old?
I mean, I can only say, I think it's things that we've talked about before is um, the, the things I can remember. There, there were, there were things fired.
Yeah, it was smart just how they responded, what, what, how.
There wasn't a lot of.
Lucy responded.
There wasn't a lot of, um, there was a little bit after the comments and the comments were things like, what are we going to do with an empty Mount Everett? Um, why are we building something? And I mean, I'm just saying.
But they're just your questions.
Um, you know, uh, why would we want to do that when we have a perfectly fine, what's going to happen with our early college programs? Say, a lot of, a lot of the comments that have been expressed. Um, so.
Was it different coming from faculty rather than from, um, Edman?
Different in terms of how it was received?
I think it was. I think they, the response, some of it was, there's a lot of reports out there. You can go read them and that did not go well. Um, uh, they were saying that they really didn't have a lot of time to be able to, to do that. Um, so um, but they were directed there. There wasn't a lot of response, honestly, because there was a lot of, they let, they let the faculty and staff say what they had to say. Uh, and then they said, well, we're going to have to follow up then. You know, there's, there's room for um, further discussion and participation. So they didn't give a lot of answers if that's what you're.
So these three questions for fifteen thousand more from each town.
Yeah. So I wanted to address the the um, there was a lot of talk in, end of May, June from Jake Eberwine about how he was working with people at the state level and he was very confident that we were going to be fully funded. And it was about July first, when the budget came out and the state has dropped all funding for regionalization. And there was, it was announced at the July meeting that that had happened. But there wasn't a lot of discussion that I recall about what we do about that. And as they're spending down this, the town money, at the August meeting, we were faced with the statement, you know, we have to get money very quickly, that the school districts have very large amounts of rural funds and the school district should pay because they have the money. And there was an assumption that we were going to have three hundred and fifty thousand and Berkshire Hills was going to have five hundred thousand, which uh, and there was a long discussion and forty-five minutes or more of what we're going to do. And Colin Smith of Sheffield said, okay, here's a possible solution. We need a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There's eight towns and two school districts. So let's divide ten into a hundred and fifty. And so everybody pays fifteen thousand. Because Berkshire Hills had said they would give half of their rural aid if we would do that too.
And I just want to say, that was Steve Bannon. Colin Smith came up with a different.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. It was Steve. Whoever, it was, it was put out there, but yours truly objected. I voted against it. I also felt that it was unfair for us to be expected to follow what Berkshire Hills did or Berkshire Hills only to pay what we would pay based on what we pay because we're in different situations. And I put a few other ideas out there. So I was, I was the only one. So everybody else wanted to go forward with this. And the question is wh- which of the towns are going to agree to this or are able to agree to it? Given that Berkshire, Berkshire Great Barrington is a huge town and they're being asked the same amount as Egremont or Monterey. So I um, I'm not sure what my, Nummaro is going to be. I listened to their meeting last week where Tara said that the, the planning board did a poor job of planning. And there was no um, uh, regional planning. I mean, what do we call the um, the team? The project management subcommittee was not called together to think about this as far as I know.
Oh, I, I think it was.
No, project management hasn't been.
On this issue.
No.
Not that I remember.
Lucy just brought it up at this meeting.
Yeah. So anyway, um, I'm not sure Nummaro is going to pay all or some or none. Uh, Egromash, I don't think is decided yet. Uh, no Sheffield is already voted to pay the fifteen thousand. We just heard from our superintendent about what.
What Monterey is asking us, what we're doing.
Well, oh yes, we got a letter from Monterey yesterday. They had a meeting. They wanted to know, first of all, how much money we had. Really, which we can't say, but we can surely say we don't have three hundred thousand dollars spare. And um, because they're going to base their contribution somewhat on what we do perhaps. I don't know. And so I think as a group, we can say a number of things. We have a choice to say we need to wait to see how much money we have. We need to wait to see what the towns do. We could say off the top that our budget is so slim and I want to say that of this hundred and fifty thousand, um, eighty-five thousand is being put into this educational visioning with fifty of it being covered by the Bar Foundation through a grant that we didn't, that the K, Burke, K twelve wrote for facilitators who cost between a hun- one thousand seven hundred and two thousand five hundred dollars a day to work with the team on the high school design. So that doesn't cover any, any promotion, any outreach. It's pretty much, there may be an outreach session or two, but it's mostly on these consultants working on the high school.
Yes. So one of the, one of the questions that I had when I first read this was what happens? What happens if they don't get the Bar Foundation grant?
Well, that was last night. It was said, well, Bar Foundation doesn't invite you to apply unless they're pretty sure they're going to give you the money. That's what we heard. So I said, if we don't have any money, then we pause. And we do work on a local level and carefully use the money that we have because we don't have the same timeline as Berkshire Hills does with their planning. So it's very difficult for us to to be on the same page with this rush to get all of this visioning done by December. I also brought up that this time of year wasn't a great time for teachers or administrators because we're starting school and new curriculum materials and getting to know what's going on. And if they want robust participation, why would you pick this time? But as you know, I, I don't speak the same language. And uh, Jeff.
I just want to be clear on what the, the hundred and fifty is for. So it's for educational visioning? For the new, the proposed new district, new high school?
Well, I consent, the, the budget that I've seen is like a block thirty thousand for project manager for each three months or something. So it's uh, sixty thousand for project manager and then it's fifteen thousand for the financial uh, firm that's doing things for us. It's legal for twelve thousand. It's uh, I mean, there are these these numbers that I have never seen related to actual actions that are going to be taken by, with this money. But it's uh, so with this visioning, the Bar Foundation will pick up fifty thousand of the eighty-three for eighty-five, I think it adds up to. The rest of it is, we would have to be raising.
Okay. And that's the only operational, that's the only thing, line item that it's for is visioning and project management?
With, with Bar, the fifty thousand is just for high school consultants to lead the, the steering teams of the high school visioning. Doesn't cover anything else of the work we're doing. Fine.
I was going to try to say next to nothing, but this has really been bothering me and I'm, I'm very sorry that Laura and Danelle are not here. Because maybe I'm completely off. Um, we hadn't seen the Bar Foundation grant proposal that was sent in yesterday. And I asked for it. And it was sent to us. And basically, and this is just my reaction. I feel as though I'm being asked to oversee my own funeral arrangements. Um, oh, it, when you read through, now remember, when I asked the questions also Jake made it very clear that he was submitting this under Burke twelve. The org, so you know, it's a lot of things are muddied because it's sort of like in a way double dipping and, and so even in the proposal, there is just one line that sort of recognizes that the biggest issue is going to be Southern Berkshire Regional School District High School faculty and what will happen. Um, on one of the, the, on the overseeing visioning committee, there is one person who will represent the education and that's the chair of our subcommittee who we selected, Deb.
She's going to represent.
Yeah, that's what it says in there. Who's not an educator. So she is the representative. Would you read the details of who's on the team? Um, and rather than inquiry, and that's why I really wish others would read it. It's pub. I mean, if I didn't ask yesterday, I have a feeling we never would have seen it. When you read it, it's, it's not as much visioning is as how are we going to sell this? And how are we going to do it in conjunction, in conjunction with the MSBA guidelines?
Uh, Nancy? So what happens when the, if the uh, Southern Berkshire towns do not agree, this sort of taking it to the next step, to the next action, next power, what happens if the towns decide, yeah, no, we're not. You know, we'll give you a couple thousand dollars, give you ten bucks.
Yeah. Well, I guess they're going to have to go back to the drawing board and, and Jake is looking for money other places.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I, I think um, they're looking for a vote tonight if you feel ready to um,
What?
Um, whether we're giving them fifteen thousand dollars.
The school district.
The school district. Out of our budget.
Out of our rural aid, which we don't know how much it is yet.
Recognize it when Berkshire Hills met at their school committee meeting. I don't know if they've met since then. They approved up to sixty thousand dollars that they would give from their rural aid. And they, and then someone said, well, it's depending on what Southern Berkshire does.
So they would match.
In watching how they work, because I watch it on CTSB, you know, lots of times. They don't do their budgeting the way we do. We have, and, and if you watch it, you, this is aside from this issue. We always have the concerns of the five towns, like breathing down our necks. They come, they seem to have a lot, lot looser relationship or tangential relationship with their three towns. So I don't know, you know, or, or maybe they have a most enormous budget with a lot of free money. I don't know. That you would know better that they'd say, oh, we can give you sixty thousand.
Yeah.
Nancy? Oh, um, when do we know? When do we find out? More or less, we don't know. So, okay. So we don't, all right. So um, I guess I'm going to put my, I'm going, I'm going to I'm going to be inspired by Jane and going to say, just from a practical budgeting standpoint in my world, um, I budget according to what I know I have in hand. And one, we don't know what we, we've had this conversation a lot throughout the whole process, admittedly at least. It seems like it's been, but one, we don't know what we have because we don't know what the rural aid is. Two, right now, we know the rural aid is going to specific things that we need, including the insurance um, upgrade for, um, so that rural aid has actual, if we get it, has specific needs that are district related. And the district has to come first as far as I'm concerned. So, um, and the needs of the district have to be managed and that's all I have to say.
I think if we went back to your my um, select board said, we're taking fifteen thousand taxpayer money out of the pot that it was, that we sent it for.
Yeah.
And we're putting it in another pot. I think George is the one. Mary would be very happy.
Yes. I wouldn't want to be on the receiving end of that.
Just, I mean, everybody has a different.
Yeah.
Select board and, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Bonnie?
Um, just, I have two other things. One, Renee Wood, who's the chair in Sheffield, said, we will make it clear that they are getting no other money. So if they don't get it from somewhere else and that coming back doesn't say it's now twenty, they're not getting it. That's one. Two, I think it, to me, it was a reaction of poor planning. It was, it was or keeping in the back of the mind that they could go and come to us again. Because it was just announced with her at the last large meeting in August. It was said, well, all our money ends the end of September.
That's what it stands to.
Not my problem.
Right.
Now I think.
Well, we're just.
Uh, Jeff? Yep.
Um, yeah, I concur with Nancy. Um, our responsibility is to our students and faculty. Now, what we're budgeted for, um, I got raked over the poles. Beth was there um, about our E and D usage and whatnot. And if we're using, if we're getting hammered by town. And if we're using, if we're getting hammered by towns about trying to keep the assessment low and then having them come back to us, I think is inappropriate. And I want to draw the point again that prior to this eight town planning committee, that Berkshire Hills approached our school committee to engage in conversations about studying consolidation. The towns took it upon themselves that they were leading this effort. And that we were to support them on this. They need to step up and leave. So if they have a problem with the budgeting because it was not thought out in their budgetary planning, I think it should go back. And I'm sorry to be so harsh on this. But, you know, we are still dealing with a tremendous amount of learning loss from the pandemic. It's well documented. We have kids, even though we're doing great strides, getting kids accelerated and back to level, it's still not like it's back to normal. And I really wish that people who really are not touching the schools as much as they are advocating that we need to consolidate, would take a step back and think about what the kids need. And, yeah, so I'm, I'm not in any position to support it tonight. I would like to see what our assessment is and then take all the considerations about our insurance assessments that need to be done at a later time. Thanks for letting me speak.
I was just the quickest side. Tried to look up the last two minutes of the last two regional meetings that haven't been posted as early this week.
I do think, if I could just speak, I do want to say, I think our towns did acknowledge, they being acknowledged as well as John Silver, that they are very hard on us for our budgeting. And they did acknowledge that. And I think that is why some of the original formulas that were being presented changed, not saying that we enjoy the the last formula, but I think that that I should say that because they did say that, that we were you know, they've asked us to be very brutal and we've done that. So I think they did take that as a consideration. I think we should at least acknowledge that.
Yeah. And Art?
I make a motion that we put no money towards this at this present time.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? So the motion is that we not put any money into this until we know, till
Till we know more.
Till we know more about what the actual rural aid is and what our new costs are gonna be for insurance.
That's not what Art's motion is.
Yeah, I, okay, so let's get it short. Art's motion was just not at this time.
That's all he's saying.
Okay, say, I love it. I'm writing it.
I said, not to put any money in this at this present time.
I love it. Thank you.
Do you think you should just include this, the regional planning board? So that this legally is there? You'll take the amendment?
Yep.
All right, so that's my amendment, that the Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee does not approve placing any additional funds in regional planning board.
At this, okay, at this present time?
At this present time.
Perfect.
Okay. And Jeff has accepted the amendments and anything else before we vote? All right, Art?
No.
You have to say yes.
Jeff?
Just to clarify, yay means that you're voting not to.
Right.
So, yes, I'm in favor of this.
Yeah, I love, yeah, okay. Jim?
Yeah, we don't normally have one like this.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
And Jane? Yes. All right. So we, and we've come to a agreement on that.
To bring up something else.
About the planning board?
About the planning board. I think, and I don't know how, you know, this fifteen thousand is one thing. Even having read, which I think we never would have gotten to see this proposal, and we can't stop Burke twelve from what they're doing. But I think it's important that we all read what they think educational visioning, what Jake and Burke twelve is submitting. Because it is all aimed at one thing. And I think it really behooves us to determine what it is we want to do. I mean, you spoke one point, you know, I should get off of this because I don't believe it. Well, you know, you look at the six no votes. They all came out of the Southern Berkshire Regional School District when this proposal went forward. And I think it's important in terms of supporting our staff, supporting our administration, and mostly our families and our kids. If we have a vision that differs from what's being pursued, we've got to figure a way to be more involved and not just be reactive. And I'm not sure exactly what we should do. And maybe I was the only one who, having read, you know, that that proposal to Bar, said, this is really going beyond and I'm very upset by it. So I want to keep a smile on. But I think as a school committee, we have a great responsibility and and like, I'm only the school committee member from Sheffield on that group of twenty-four. I don't know if I am really putting forward what our district feels when I'm in that group.
Exactly. Well, I think to your point, when I get to my, my time, which is coming up shortly. Okay, well, thank you, everybody, for such a
Well, I don't know, does anyone else feel there's something we could be doing?
Well, that's
Or should be doing?
Yeah, pulling out of this, that's what.
Well, I, I, my personal feeling is that the way I see community involvement is community conversations and a lot of listening and going to the schools, to our libraries, not with, to listen to what they want for their their, their youth. And what education means to them, because I don't think anybody's asked them anything about that. And I would really like to approach the idea that small schools are not bad. There is something wonderful about what is available here because we are small. And we need just a chance to prove that we can make it affordable. And
Well, I'm just gonna give you one thing. George O'Leary, you know, from Sheffield, who Dennis knows, not somebody I tend to agree with, says that for years, every time he interviews the kids for Boys State and Girls State, does he do that through the Qantas or what organization?
That's to the Qantas.
Yeah. So he does all the interviewing and he always asks them about, you know, what do they feel about being in a bigger school, if there was some merger? And I was surprised because he said, the kids always are saying bigger doesn't mean better. They like what they have. I think we'd be better off with more kid, but this, he gets consistently that reaction when he interviews kids. So I'm agreeing with you. If as a school committee, we decide it's our responsibility, I think we have a major role in saving our district. If we do something.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you. I'm just gonna build on that because I want to reflect on the wonderful conversations that happened at the visioning for the early college. And the way in our convocation on the opening day, we heard from Charles Miller that we're gonna start thinking in pre-K about how to kids can learn how to be critical thinkers and communicators and get these learning skills that they're gonna need when the early colleges, when they get there, when it's going full tilt. So I get goosebumps about how meaningful that statement was, that this is not a window dressing. We're gonna try to get a few kids some college credits, but everybody in the district in, in, on staff and administration is going to contribute to looking at the way kids learn to use their minds well, was really, and get self-esteem that they need to go the direction that they would like to go. And to top it off the speech yesterday, wonderful motivational speaker, but he was talking about his eight children and he doesn't care if they go to education or they go to employment or they go to enlistment, but they know where they want to go. And I think that's what we're committing to. And it's very unique and wonderful. So I, I want to applaud the administration and for being united on this amazing venture.
I want to say something too, as a parent with adult children who went through the district. I think what you're talking about, Jane, is something that has made Mount Everett, well, Southern Berkshire Regional District, Regional School District special, at least since whenever parents started, like in nineteen ninety-five or nineteen ninety-six. I don't know about for your kids, but you know, they were taught whether they liked what they heard from my children or not, A, Jesse. The kids were taught to speak and were told to, I mean, it's just, that's the ethos of Southern Berkshire and has been for a very long time. So I just wanted to have that continued to be supported. You know, some thirty years later.
So, yeah, so I'm, I'm envisioning that we're gonna have some more of these community conversations. And if we can get them away from the Zoom venue and we can get them into places where people are comfortable and can have, look at each other and react and we can see body language and smiling and
Well, I mean, we can, you know, it's time to start thinking about our the, the different, either community conversations that I was hosting last year via Zoom. We can, we can decide to pick a date and hold another one.
Right.
And we could do it in the tech back and say who's interested in having a conversation.
Yeah, we heard a lot that time with faculty and I think the faculty, if
Not just faculty, I'm talking community.
Right. No, I'm not disagreeing, but I think at this particular point, especially given the vote that we just took, our staff needs to know that they have, that we have their backs.
Yeah. Okay. That's my report. To the superintendents.
You have Art here.
Oh, yeah.
I think, well, we have this committee together. We need to do something now as far as figuring out how we're gonna move forward with this or not move forward with this. Because another school committee might have not the same reaction that this school committee has. So I think this is of the utmost importance.
Well, I, I think that if the school committee were to take a stand as a group that were, say, we decided we were for it or against it, since we only represent a small portion of who's working on this thing, because our municipalities, except for Agremont, seem to be wanting to move forward. So I'm not trying to discourage us from taking a stand, but I, I think we have to understand that our power is very limited in terms of except our influence on the people that care about the school is big. So.
Let me just ask a question. With the, with the school committee members who are here now, how many of you have gotten questions from people in the community about this issue?
I was, I'd been last night with my wife. People at the next, talked to the woman who was at the table next to us. She said, oh, you're from Agremont. What do you think about this consolidation of school districts? It's, it's about the third time that happened, third, fourth time.
Yeah, I got asked.
I think a lot of people were
I've never been asked.
No? You've never been asked? I wouldn't ask you either.
Does she tell you? I, I regularly have conversations where people will ask, what do you think about it and whatnot? And the, the, the perception that I think I get mostly from people not connected with the schools is that there's this perception that it's completely unsustainable having two, two high schools. And then the thing I, I, I say, which I don't think has been fully answered yet, is we really don't know what the cost is gonna be. And there, there's gonna be a proposal. We don't know what's gonna happen with regional transportation. We're still dealing with a pseudo monopoly in our area for bus transportation. We're dealing with the state not fully funding regional transportation. And now you're gonna be expecting with all the high school students increased routes, right? It sounds like there's gonna be more buses from greater distances. Because there's still that requirement. So I don't feel like the committee, the school district planning board, regional school district planning board, has proven, and maybe I'm wrong, I just, I don't, I'm not convinced it's gonna be cheaper. And that seems to be the animus for a lot of people. And when it comes to the educational outcomes, that's when people lose interest. Especially with people, because the majority of the people in our communities are taxpaying, non parents, right? And, and, and so like, I feel like the interest wanes at that. Yeah. That's like, that's what my experience is.
I'm gonna take one more comment and we do have very important other things to do tonight. And that's, it's episode, Bonnie?
Jeff, you just hit on what I hear most often, that whole issue of sustainability. And if we're able to show and I know that we are a sustainable, not only sustainable, but a thriving district. That's what I get from loads of those people.
Continue to be.
Continue.
Continue. The district has always been able to afford itself under very difficult circumstances.
But I think there has to be a way that we get what Jeff addressed. Because aside from people who know our district, the others, that's what I get. Can you sustain this? And if we can address that and you look in even the bar proposals out there, class size is twenty-two, that's how they make it work. Transportation, what do you say to people in New Marlboro? What do you say to people in Ashley Falls? What do you say to, from my house on the northern Sheffield? That I now time it to get to Monument Mountain where they're building the new high school. The fastest I've been able to get there, remember, I don't pick up kids on the way, is nineteen additional minutes. What does that do for kids on a bus? And, and we're talking more than half our district. Are we doing this? Is this going to get better education and better outcomes? And we haven't gotten any of the answers to that. We're told that the only way you possibly save money is with class sizes all being twenty to twenty-two, eliminating picture positions where they declare redundancies.
We already have empirical data, sorry, we already have empirical data on the buses where the activity buses running from New Marlboro that do multiple stops to get up to Brook Barrington is taking over and out. Right? This is a volunteer bus. So we already know that if like, you're gonna be doing actual bus routes from like edges of the, the district, you're gonna have to have more buses running fewer stops to get kids to.
I'd like to suggest for our next school committee meeting, and in the interim, you have some kind of a plan. I think Art is right. We're going to have another school committee in a few weeks. I think we have to come up with some type of an action plan. And if others are hearing what Jeff and I are hearing, this issue of sustainability, we're saying thriving, we've got to find a way our next newsletter, whatever we're doing to let our five communities know.
Okay. Thank you.
Jeff, Dennis.
Yep.
Jane, if I could make a comment on this, I I have prob- I have probably been approached by, at this point in time, over fifty people from our five towns. And the 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 common question that they ask is, or the the feeling that they express is that this is gonna cost us more money as taxpayers. And that's the single largest thing that they bring forward. Is is that? And 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 we we have not been able at any point in time to be able to answer that one way or the other.
Yeah.
You know, and and that's.
It will cost us more money. It's in the charts in the last report.
Yes, well, okay. We need more information. Yeah.
So we have to address that.
Okay. Beth, you're on.
So I'm not going to, because we have the district improvement plan coming up, and I think that's plenty, but I would like to just say that I think we had a really great opening days. I think uh we felt like this was um a particularly successful um sense of um commitment from our entire um faculty and staff and administration about um this year and about supporting our students. And we had a great presentation yesterday from Dr. Adel Brown um on a variety of topics. And as Bonnie is quoting, um, this is uh his whole, his whole message is because of kids and that's why we do everything that we do. So I think we have to keep that in mind. And it's all about leading with heart, which I think we've been doing all along. Um, I also would like to thank Stephen Cohen for not only participating from Agremont, who's been participating very actively in our early college initiative, but also for his lovely letter to the editor in the Berkshire Edge. If you haven't read it, please read it. It was very nice. That's all I'm gonna say here.
Yeah, I just wanna say that I was at his table.
You were.
And I, we have a new hire, which I think we're gonna discuss. Uh, and I observed her relate to a person who was not particularly happy.
At first.
At first, and I'm so impressed with her ability to bring people on board and listen and express clearly what the goals are. So again, goose pimples was uh she's somebody that I've shepherded since, um, Jay, let me Marsha. So, yeah, okay, so thank you, Beth. We'll be hearing more from you in a little while. And thank you for bringing this miracle man. I wanna, is there, there's not a recording of it?
We don't record it, but.
Okay, all right. Uh, so now Director of Curriculum and Instruction and Professional Development.
I I think our two shall pass on the report and we'll just talk about the dip.
Okay. And Sandy, you have a report in the pack?
I do. I have a report in the pack which you can read and I'm gonna going to talk a lot more about pre-K and our expanded early childhood program when we talk about our dip.
Okay.
So I'll leave the rest for the next time.
We got an act, we we now would say it as a dip?
I apologize, drive. They like it, they like it.
Sorry.
We like the district improvement plan.
I like it. Yeah, right, okay. All right, so then uh the early college with Bard. Uh, I would like just to remind people, the next session is October.
Nineteenth at six to seven thirty at Simon's Rock.
And I hope everybody puts that in their calendar because I don't want you to miss the opportunity to get excited about this in real time.
Six to seven thirty.
And did they say which building?
That, yeah.
So. No, but if you just block out that time, I think it'll be good. And other than that, um, do you wanna just, is that in this?
It is, um, but I, what what, we're having this as a placeholder for um different items and there may be reports, we may have our early college internship coordinator come in at times, we may, you know, Jessie and I and Julie and Stan, you know, all of us work on it in different ways. So um, there's lots of things to report, but it might not be every time. And we also leave this on here for uh Provost Weinstein or um Mr. Knox, who's uh working on the uh Simon's Rock. I will say that uh our coordinator came in this evening and just said, um, she's incredibly impressed with the uh professors that are here um with our classes and the students that are participating, and there's quite a few. And she said they are just going above and beyond and are just outstanding. And um so she really wanted to convey that and she said it's going really well and we may have uh more details uh at the next meeting.
So just tell us what courses are running right now.
Film study, I believe, and.
I was gonna cover that later.
Okay, cover it later.
Okay.
Cause I don't enjoy it.
Okay, so now we finally get to new business. So we are, we have um in our package requests for um some waiver for two out of district students.
In the middle of the packet.
And um, I suppose.
It should be number fourteen.
Fourteen A.
Fourteen A. I ha- I suppose I need to say that um Walker Stubbs' parents were my students. So.
That's a requirement, but.
No, but I, no, because maybe I shouldn't vote. But they both went to Mount Everett and um so that's what I wanna say. If you feel like I shouldn't vote, I I won't. Is that disqualifying you because I know them? Okay. All right, so um let's see. Have you all had a chance to look at the request for the Stubbs family? I do find, I have a question as to, well, I can take a, we have to vote, so I can take a motion and then we can have a discussion.
Solo.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Dennis and Art. So is there any discussion about this? Questions?
It's just a place where I'm out of my head, I have my, around me, so I don't know what.
Yeah, so I'm wondering, I'm assuming there must be a space for them there?
They, we wouldn't be bringing it forward if there wasn't a space.
Any question, question I would have, I guess, which some people may also be concerned about is how often have we done this? I can't remember us doing this in the past.
Yes.
Oh, we have definitely done it.
Yes.
Yeah.
We had a student who's been in the program the last two years that you invited.
So.
There is present.
Have siblings in the district.
Usually they're, usually it's because they already have a sibling. So like with our normal school choice program, we always accept the family, once, once we've said that, we accept the whole.
Yeah, I remember that.
So in a lot of cases, these are students who've had siblings at a farm.
Okay, so I think we should vote on them individually. Is that right? Or is it? Or should we do it as a package?
I I think. I I don't know if, that's up to you guys, I think.
Yeah, well, the motion was, the motion on the floor is uh altogether, right?
It has, it has two out of district students, so I guess we could do it together. All right, so um before, are we ready to vote? All right, so we have my list. Art.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Bonnie.
Yes.
Kara.
Yes.
Nancy.
Yes.
And Jane, yes. That feels really good. Okay, now we have lateral movements in fourteen B of um faculty who have continued their education and have gone to the next higher step. And I'll take a motion.
Move to approve the lateral movements. Moves on unit A salary effective September one, twenty twenty two for the individuals listed.
Second.
Well, that was a tie between Dennis and Jeff.
Dennis can have it, he's got home turf.
Okay, uh, are there any questions there?
Congratulations.
I just was wondering if we knew they were.
Cause it's quite a process. You have to fill out paperwork a year in advance. You have to know.
So we have it in the budget.
Yes. That's why, that's why it's like this and that there's.
Great, great. Okay, so we're ready to vote on that. Art.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Yeah. Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Bonnie.
Yes.
Kara.
Yes.
Nancy.
Yes.
And Jane, yes. Okay.
Well, congratulations, Julie and Elizabeth. And to the others.
Yeah, of course. Okay, so now we have we need a drum roll? For all the work that they've been doing.
It is small summer. Strategy of for district improvement.
Okay, so.
It actually should be continued.
S C I P.
Yes. Okay.
It's not, but I think it's more realistic as to what we're actually doing. All right, so you want me to start? Shall I start?
Yes.
Okay, cause so I, my my job tonight is to talk about the process and give the committee a high level overview of the document and the plan. Um, I I hope you had some time to to take a look at it. We're really striving to provide updates at the beginning of the school year. I I hope you noticed that we are right up front here in September. Uh, we use this document as kind of our North Star for alignment. It works to set the school committee superintendent goals, the faculty and staff, the administrative goals and our our outcomes for students. So um, it's a really important document. I'd like to ta- I'd like to thank the administrative team who is here tonight for the three full day summer retreats that they spent working on this um plan. It's a cyclical process, so we start by looking at it at the end of the year. We review the plan and determine what the status of each action item to determine if it's completed, ongoing, needs to be tweaked at all, or we need to add something. The goals for the document are that it's a living document. We actually want this to be something that is used as opposed to what we used to do when we did strategic plans or dips. And you did this huge binder and then it went on a shelf and no one ever looked at it again. We're trying to make it a living document. I always like to throw in from my research during my dissertation to the effects, significant change, you need seven to ten years. So we're trying to have our our aligner objectives to the state rubric and have it be a strategic plan for five years, but giving you the action steps for the particular year in front of us. In our action steps, we try to touch upon or um do work on them, but we also have to be realistic and flexible because there's a huge number of action steps. Um, I'm happy to say for the last several years, we have hit that goal of actually making sure we've um started something. Um, we want it to be consistent. We want our our leadership to be um consistent and have it be that there's clearly defined expectations for everybody. And and as we know, we we need the flexibility because other things can happen. So like for instance, COVID, and then all your action steps might be out the window and might have some new ones. So. Um, so what we're gonna do two things, I think, how you know, how the school committee measure the outcomes uh of this. And I think we demonstrated that last year. We tried to do presentations throughout the year that hit on all of these different action steps we're taking, like school improvement plans, like data, like budgets, you know, all those things so that the school committee is informed at the subcommittee meetings. And also, uh Lynette and I are going to try to work on a year long agenda. So you can know ahead of time what the topics are gonna be and that they'll align to the district improvement plan. So we make sure we're hitting on everything that you would would wanna know. Each admin um person who's presenting tonight will have two or three minutes to talk about a priority on here. Obviously, we're not gonna do every single one, but just give you a flavor of um some of the work that we're doing. And I I'm thinking maybe the best way to do this would be to let everybody do their thing and jot down some questions. And then if the chair allows, um, we'll go back and try to do our best to answer all the questions. So, but, okay, I'm gonna eject myself from this seat and uh whoever gets to go first, oh, Sandy. Oh, you're gonna say, okay, then never mind. I'm not gonna eject myself.
Okay, I'm going to be speaking about category A there, instructional leadership. And number three, expanded early childhood program. Number three of the strategy for district improvement plan. Thank you.
That's your welcome.
So I think you're all aware, we've significantly spanned, expanded our early childhood program. And I just wanted to give you an overview of what we done, we've done over the past two years, but you know, a lot last year. So we've been working closely with the Pediatric Development Center to know which children ages worth the three are receiving services or if they've been referred and maybe did not receive services due to COVID. So we have a standing list. We know who's being referred, who's coming our way. We held a pre-kindergarten screening fair in June after school let out in conjunction with the kindergarten screening fair, returning to a way that we did this a number of years ago, and it was very well attended and very successful. We were able to screen most of our pre-kindergarten enrollees that we had at the time. We opened enrollment to all three and four year olds in the district. Three by age um by September first of the year of of attending the school. We currently have six classrooms open. We have three at Undermountain, one at South Agremont and two at New Marlborough. Enrollment as of this very moment is fifty nine. We have four pending. You've just approved two pending, and we have five Pediatric Development Center referrals that would put us at sixty eight. Um, we continue to get inquiries almost every day and we're kind of waiting through them. We know, and I think I mentioned this at a meeting last year, that we know that about twelve, maybe thirteen is a good spot when you have little ones. Three and four year olds are very active and they're sometimes still, you know, learning backfarming and those sorts of things. So we think twelve to thirteen in the class is the best kind of number, number that we came up with in our early childhood committee. Speech, language, occupational therapists are scheduling times in the classrooms that focus on development in those areas. We have early literacy interventions offered by the specialists in the classrooms. The students, the children participate in all of the specialists here at school. The, we are working right now on a pre-care, after-care program, pre-K, after-care program. We do not currently have one. And um, we're working right now to get that developed. We know that it'll be a help for our children and families. And all of this is going to lead to a much expanded, we're thinking soon, kindergarten program. So we're looking at all of our data, looking at the census. I'm eager to see what the new census in October might tell us. We have had some outreach from, as you know, uh neighboring families that live in neighboring towns. And we're looking at those really closely, like we talked about earlier, if they have other children in the district or if we have the capability of offering um a space for them. I just wanted to say really quickly before I move on, um, I just wanna talk about this early childhood team. I just need to list these names because I started thinking about it. I think it's important for you to know who's involved. We have Kim Blow, Betsy Perry, Brenda Vandebogart, Crystal Daly, Penny Roddick, Amy Souls, Jennifer Rossi, Molly Di Giovanni, Carrer Terrell, Norma Drum, Sarah Cook, Denise Andrus, Jamie Lynn Shive, Sue Crom, Kelly McDonald, Melanie Heaton, Sophia Hughes, Darcy Myers, Lynn Webster, Catherine Blake, Courtney Pirnack, Margaret Lathan, Suzie Biaco, Charles Paul, Julie, Beth, me, and I probably left out people, but I just need you to know all of the people that are involved in that early childhood program.
Okay, so it's great. So you can tell that they really don't like the name because it says strategy for district improvement on here. I just want you to know it's strategy for continuous improvement, going forward. Chris, Chris is next. Excellent.
All right, I'm gonna talk to you briefly about the pathways to graduation, industry recognized credentials. So as as relates to. So as it relates to my position here, what I'm trying to do. So IRC industry industry recognized credentials is just kind of Desi's term for some of the things that students may be able to achieve during their high school years. And they have a list, but it's certainly not everything. So for instance, this year we've started three D printing class. So we're at some point, probably mid mid quarter here, we're going to start this MakerBot is a premium maker of three D printers. They offer a certification program for students. Now, what exactly that can entail, it's going to entail the kids going through a particular curriculum, not just three D design, but also the printing process. So it's primarily a printing certification where they can certify their knowledge around all the workings of a three D printer, troubleshooting, things of that nature. So is that an IRC that Desi recognizes in their list? No, but it's something that we know is valuable to our kids and what we can offer them here. So there's there's things like that. We have a couple of kids that have started the Cisco Academy Python class. So we're hoping that there are there is a test that they can take at the end of the core end of the semester to give them Python certification. So we're hoping that that will take place. Those are proctored exams. We'll probably have to take them somewhere. This this partnership with Cisco Academy is new to us or some of it we're still kind of feeling through, but those are some of the things that some of the students are working towards. And then in terms of the innovation pathway, we'd like to sort of take those courses and and sort of bolster them up into into that form. So that the innovative pathway grant process, it's due at the end of October. What we'd like to do is apply for innovative pathway in manufacturing as well as information technology. So information technology would would be primarily based around our Cisco Academy courses. The manufacturing would be around our robotics, three D printing. In that program, you have to have a couple of base courses, a couple of advanced courses as well as a business partner. So Lindy Marcel and I have actually been talking about how her role as really college coordinator can actually cycle into this initiative as well. So her and I have a meeting with Plasko Light next week to talk about then kind of becoming on board as our main business partner in this in this venture that they would. And it could be for both manufacturing and IT actually, because they they'll have an advanced computer network there as well. So but we might also look at Berkshire Bank or some of those other entities in the local area. So the idea being that a kid could go from taking, you know, three D printing class here Mount Everett to eventually doing an internship at Plasko Light and designing plastic pieces with that. So that's kind of the the thought process between credentials, innovative pathway. You know, whether we get the grant for innovative pathway or not, doesn't really change what we're going to be doing. We're still going to be doing all that. It would just be nice to be able to call it that officially. We're headed there.
Right, so I'm going to talk about under instructional leadership, the implementation of the college program. And I've been threatened slash told to stay to two to three minutes. I failed miserably at the last college meeting to stay.
You were wonderful.
Well, I appreciate you saying.
Well, you were very engaging. I didn't.
I tried to be.
I was bored.
So the the early college operation that we have now, we made some changes to start to get our kids in the right place. So the big change was changing the middle school schedule, which is much different than we've done in the past. Kids are getting seventy five to eighty minutes in math and English. And then most of other classes are right around forty minutes. The hope is obviously to get kids more prepared for the early college experience. So that was one change that we made. We made some changes to the high school schedule. Basically moving certain electives around that kids really look forward to, to give them more opportunity to access some of the elective college courses. So one example is John Hamel teaches the honors government and politics class. In the afternoon, we slid it up earlier in the schedule so that it wouldn't conflict with some of the elective classes so that kids would have more opportunity. As far as those classes that we started to mention before, we're running an elective on film study, which has been great. We have our English classes that are running. There's two sections of writing and humanities. There'll be another section of English in the spring. We have a couple of kids that have already sort of signed up from the fall class because they want to do the spring class. So they have English all year long. The advantage is they get two credits. We have a couple of kids taking both the college class through the professor that Bard sends to us of those seniors and also taking Kevin Woben's murder most foul. He's the first Mount Everett teacher doing a a college level class. So we're really excited about that. We have some other people on tap to sort of get trained for that. The idea obviously is wall to wall with kids having the opportunity to earn upwards of thirty credits. Obviously, as we're in the first couple of years of this new agreement, we're not going to have anyone who's going to graduate with thirty credits from Bard. We have some kids who have closing in on thirty credits doing all the other opportunities we have through college. But in terms of the Bard situation, we're really looking at the sophomore class as the first class that will really have that opportunity to get to thirty plus credits. We have some things on tap for the rest of the year in eighth grade, ninth grade, and tenth grade as sort of our on ramping to get kids prepared for it. And obviously, now that we have more of a well, through the fact that we've been acknowledged as an early college provider with Bard, we'll be doing some more outreach to parents. But for the last three years, you know, we've shared information with them, but you know, we didn't have that designation through the state. So you know, as we shared, we said, here's great opportunities for your kids. Jump on board. Now we can do it more formally since the partnership is recognized by the state and really get parents on board to what some of the possibilities are. So as we've said many times, we're really excited about this. This has been a priority for the last couple of years and it will continue to be for the future as we really find to what we're doing and and really give every kid a chance to to accumulate credits, whether they intend to go to college or not. Thank you.
No, it's Paul. We have an order.
I have it written down.
So it's my first time presenting here. Jane said I had to talk for at least forty five minutes.
I wanted to give events for special.
So I'm going to talk about professional culture and faculty staff collaboration and discourse between the staff and channels of communication. So one of the things that we've done is you all know what's in the district calendar is build in the extra half days every month, almost every month for PD. Then there's the scheduling adjustments that Jesse just talked about. And so then we built into elementary increased opportunities for professional development at a PLC time. And it's at the same time every day for common planning time, staff communication or training as needed. And that's all.
You did a great job.
Charles, now you're up.
Can I leave before he does this?
You might want to. I might want to. Here we go.
Been told to be brief, so.
I was thinking about it. I didn't even see you.
First, for some context, I'm dressed up as Odysseus from Homer's Odyssey, obviously, because my this is currently Ellie's favorite fictional character. And so I I've made an effort to be in place as dressed as Waldo. However, it does somewhat correlate with the initiative I'm going to talk about, which is about a community engagement effort under number C. And so what we're bringing back this year after three years of being disconnected and, you know, so remote from one another, is we are once again inviting volunteers to come in and do community guest readers. And the way we've structured it is it's going to continue throughout the school year. So we have, we have one class at South Agarmont. We have six classes at Marlboro Central, and we have sixteen classes at Undermount. So in total, we have twenty three classes and each class will have the opportunity to invite, well, a community member to adopt that class for the school year. And what it's going to consist of is over four Fridays throughout the school year, we just get this right, October, December, February, and May. They will be invited in to read to the class. And the book will be selected by the teachers and the librarian. However, there will be prior communication with the guest reader. So if they're so enthused to dress up as a fictional character, you're more than welcome to. Paul Sullivan did it himself. And if they don't want to, you know, if it's older kids and so on, then we're really hoping to get into some really cool Socratic conversations in class about the reading about the content and why it's valuable, why the story might resonate, and why the material just might be cool. We're trying to infect everybody, obviously, with a level of literature at all times. And then, oh, and what's and what's it called? And so this is probably the most important thing that I I workshop with my five year old and my two year old. And we came up with Read to Me, So Be. One, because we like rhyming. It's a, you know, that's an early childhood literacy skill. But number two, it's inviting and the so be obviously prefers the Southern brochure. So if you're interested in being one of those community members, if you'd like to read or adopt a class, shoot me an email and we will sign you up first come, first served. Oh, and the mints, the mints. Okay, so my favorite guest reader as a child is my father. And my father is from Luton, England. I don't know if you know this, but I'm a dual citizen to the United Kingdom. I have an EU passport. And he used to read us Alice, Alice in Wonderland and do all the different voices. My favorite poem, which was the Jabberwocky, for you to recite right now. But Queen Elizabeth died today and she was the longest, you know, reigning sovereign entity of our lifetime. And I think ever, I know, within the European continent at least. And so in her honor, she's ninety six. My my wife's grandmother is also ninety six and going strong. I think she's going to make it to one hundred. But I have some of Uncle Joe's mint balls. They're classic from England candies. So please enjoy. Yeah, that's why Paul wanted to go first.
This is why Julie had to go for last because nobody was willing to follow that. There's always one. Well, I'm I'm used to following him. So I'm not nearly as engaging. So I, so I am going to be talking a little bit about management and operations because under that we talk a lot about providing increased opportunities for inclusion and we talk about universal design for learning and responsive classroom. And universal design for learning is a wonderful large umbrella that almost, well, actually, everything that we have in our strategic.
Strategy for continuous improvement. We're gonna tattoo it.
Tattoo it on my arm.
Everything in that plan falls kind of under this umbrella. So just kind of a simplified definition of UDL is that it's approach, it's an approach to teaching and learning that gives all students equal opportunity to succeed. It offers flexibility in the way students access materials, engage with materials, and how they can show what they know. So it is very global and we were fortunate enough to book Marco Chardin for opening days where he gave the initial topic to all of secondary and quite a few of elementary. Unfortunately, they also had to be at other things. So our goal for this year is that we will really submerge all of secondary in this PD and then next year we'll roll it out more to elementary. But along with the fact that we had already booked Marco to do three presentations, we applied to be a part of an academy that Desi had called the Inclusive Academy, and we were accepted into the academy, which is grant funded. And we will be a part of the academy for three years. And during that three year time, they will provide us with coaching, training, all manner of money that we don't have to spend in order to support all of our staff in getting fine tuned at how we can best support our students, all our students, all their needs, all the time. So it also ties in quite nicely with Dr. Brown. And I just, it pleases me every time we start anything, whatever grant we do, anything we talk about, it all falls into this nice puzzle and everything fits so beautifully together. So another thing that we have done is we are a part of the Learning Acceleration Network, which again is provided by Desi and is grant funded. And so through that, the group that runs it is actually the same group that wrote the accelerated roadmap for during post COVID. And so they're running this as well. And so it's another way for them to support us with that work of accelerating learning. And fortunate for the rest of the admin team, it really is focused on the three of us, Sandy, Beth, and I. But we have a wonderful coach that we've been getting to know, and they are helping us to identify just for this year a problem focus area statement and plan for the school year that's going to help improve our student achievement. So it's a great opportunity. We can sit there and bounce ideas off and then this very sweet woman goes, well, this is what I heard you say, and she makes it sound just completely cohesive. I was like, I'm like, wow, we need you all the time. Because the three of us are just like, boo. And then she's like, and here it is. Wow.
So that is my two minutes. Okay, so before we get to questions, Mr. Parker, Derek should make an introduction to whatever.
Right, so I'm really excited to share with you the last member of our administration team. We've been operating for the first two weeks of school without an assistant principal. I'm happy to announce that Julie Sternagle is going to serve as the assistant principal. Most of you know that Julie's been here since two thousand and one as a special educator. She's done a lot of leadership things in the Office of Student Services, and now she is going to be the assistant principal. She's got kids in the district. She bleeds blue and gold. We're really excited to have her move into that role. So Julie, welcome. We'll look forward to having her present to you next time. We felt like today was actually day one for her. We thought having her present our continuous improvement plan was unfair. So she's not going to be very present this time, but next time around, sure. So thank you.
I want to know how the girls.
Oh, we have a family meeting. That's all good. It's part of the whole process.
Okay. All right, so I just want to say time check ten of eight. Not that I don't want questions, but I think that this was the clearest, easiest presentation we've had. And we will have opportunities to get follow up. So if there's anything immediate that somebody needs an answer to, I'll entertain a couple. Yeah, okay, so whatever you're going to say, it's going to be a minute for a while.
She's gonna have her own time.
No, all I want to say is I think these are great talking points for the district. And I think that the, yeah, bullet points for those of us who don't have good memories and read like crap, please. Thank you.
Well, since we've been talking during this time about the district improvement program, I'd like to go ahead and move if we have voted approved the twenty two, twenty three district improvement program.
All right. So we have motion to approve, and then we have Bonnie's hand up before we vote.
Well, she's definitely good, so now you can open.
Okay, so now it's open.
Okay.
So one thing that Chris, I don't know if you've approached the Norman Rockwell Museum in terms of they had wonderful programs of partnerships in terms of digital media and film and all. And maybe there's something that we could do then, because they offered a lot of classes when they had a program rolling. And they have a lot of community involved in it. And it might be a great way, you know, with art, whatever. And it's such an enormously growing field. So for our kids to get a head start, and I'm sure you would have a partner over the art department. My other comments are mine, but I wanted to make sure. But thank you. This was a great, exciting presentation. It's like Nancy said, this is why we're so good.
Amazing. Just great, great, great. So let's vote, and then we can, we know we're going to be hearing less more details in the future. Okay, so we're voting to approve.
I could just add one other thing, which will take a second. Charles, I sent you a little video. I hope it comes to me so Ellie could see you.
If you can find one, though. All right, so Art.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Bonnie.
Yes.
Kara.
Yes.
Nancy, yes, and Jane. Congratulations on the work you did this summer. It'll be fun putting together the goals for the superintendent this year.
Fun is a scratch, but yeah.
I mean, it's
But this makes it easier for sure.
We've learned a lot since you came on board about how to think about these things. So it's quite exciting. So now we get to item fourteen D to vote to approve the new early college internship coordinator position. And
I'd like to make a motion to approve the new early college internship coordinator position.
Your second? Right. I just want to mention that this clarifies a question that came up in policy, such as maybe whether this committee does have a role in voting on new hires. And so now we're doing it, because that is part of our well.
Nice guy.
Thank you so much. So
Yes. So I just would like to say, when this was brought to my attention, I think part of this, I feel like we have been very transparent about the planning of early college and that we were hiring this position and that it was grant-funded. So it isn't technically hitting the budget, but it is correct that we should, if it's a brand-new position, the school committee should vote on it per our policy. And I apologize that I didn't do it, but I just want you to know, we didn't sneak it in. We have been talking about it. And I think we're aware, but I'm glad we were catching up now. But this is how the committee would like to continue.
And I think one quick comment about bringing Julie Sternagle up into internship position, excuse me. Plus, having Lindy Marcel return. One of the wonderful things that we experience is dedicated people who know the district and know what we're trying to do, who we enable to do things that they may never have thought they were going to do. I think both of them are going to do a great job. Jeff?
Two things. One, with everybody eating candy, we can tell who's smacking the loudest, because the camera, the owl keeps on shuffling pretty quickly. So it's very humorous. Go back and watch this, too. The other thing is, I just want to confirm, the budget for this position came through the grant, right?
It did.
Awesome. So again, congratulations on the grant, and it's quite a good, thank you.
All right.
After we vote on the position, I'd like to say something.
Okay. All right, so we've got Art.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Bonnie.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Nancy, yes, and Jane, yes.
Okay. When Beth first was describing this position, I thought of somebody who I thought might be really good for the position. And then I checked with other people before contacting her. And if any of you haven't met Lindy Marcel, I would say she, I think, symbolizes in so many ways what a Mount Everett graduate is. And also, we're talking about somebody who went to RPI, went into a field where first she was about the only woman in all of her classes. Her freshman year was asked, was recommended by an advisor to leave, because it was not a women's field. She has made a phenomenal salary in the private sector. And when she came back to the area and is now living in Sheffield, she said she wanted her next job to be a position where she could really make a difference. And she, and I can say that, you guys really clicked. And she took a big salary drop, but is so excited by this position. So
Yeah.
She's a great dog sitter. That's how I first met her.
Okay.
But please avail yourself, meet her.
We will make sure that she has a formal introduction in
Over there, and where Bob Law used to be.
Yes, but she also is being interviewed by our PR group. And there'll be, you know, lots of formal announcements about her.
And so for those of us who have known her since the children's
You probably won't meet her.
For those of us from the, who've known these kids from the time they were about, well, in her case, when she was about three, from the CHP town, what used to be the town playgroups. You know, we get to watch, yeah, we get to watch these kids grow, never mind watching kids grow from way before that. But, you know, it's just like I said earlier, just watching the kids grow up and turn into these incredible people. It's kind of across the board, and it's just, you know, it's, yeah, it's really cool. Okay, go in.
All right, now, here we are at eight o'clock. And we have item B, which I wanted to bring up. I don't think we're going to be voting on it today. But there are two issues in this section. One is the name of the upcoming October holiday, which I have a letter from actually almost a year ago from who wrote it, that we want, that they requested that we refer to Columbus Day as Indigenous Peoples' Day in our district officially. And it is signed by Patrick Donovan, Sarah Cook, Jenna Marie, Mariana Markie Lee Blackwell, Hannah Mansickel, and Stephanie Graham, and Patty Jackson. So that is a sample of people who care passionately about us renaming the holiday. I had intended to get in touch with all our five towns to see how many of them have also taken this point of view. And I, I think we, I don't, I guess we have the power to, it is on our calendar listed it as Indigenous Peoples' Day, our academic calendar.
It's currently both.
Right, so I'm bringing that up today because I think it would be a good idea to find out where our towns are and where our school community is about taking a stand about the name, rather than taking a vote tonight to say we're changing and or we're not changing. Dennis?
I disagree with you a little bit in that there's no reason why we can't go ahead and call it Columbus Day, period.
Or Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Indigenous Peoples' Day.
I think we have power to do this. What I'm trying to demonstrate to all who know us in the community, that we are not a top-down organization, and that we care about what our community, how they want to be represented, and we are
I personally don't think it's any of their business. It's basically, if we want to do it as a school district, we can do it, period. If they want to do it, they can follow along. If they don't want to do it, they don't have to follow along.
Other opinions? Yeah?
I think I'm the only Italian on the school board?
No.
So talk to Art. Yeah, he was Italian, but and Portuguese, Portuguese paid for it or Spanish?
No, Portuguese.
Portuguese is paid for.
You did yourself a good, Portugal, they will let you know.
I don't know. Who do we date for? I think that people who were already on the way when he got here. He didn't even know where Ellie was.
Bonnie?
I think the way we solved it is the way we should continue. That it is, you know, I don't object to the fact of adding Indigenous people to Columbus Day, but having, I'm not Italian, but having a number of friends who are and involved with a number of leading organizations related to this. It's been a very painful episode for a lot of people. And I do not think, for the sake of education and for our students' understanding this, we should eliminate and make it just Indigenous people. I'm like, wait, it was handed last year on our calendar, and I think it should continue that way.
How was it pinned last year?
I think, yes, again, I'm going to step in just to hear your thoughts. I think that there's enough controversy going on. I personally, I'm like, so not Italian. About as Irish and as Austrian as they come. So it's, but I do understand the, I do understand the the political or the cultural discussion going on regarding the treatment of people who started here and across the Americas. That said, I don't think this is the time to get into conversations that are potentially going to add to the add to the general polarization. We're trying to support the daylight side of this district, and we're trying to show this district is all the good parts of it. And I'm afraid if we get into arguments, which we just saw starting. If we got into arguments, I think that would be just a total manure shell.
Okay, and Dennis? Yep. I'm you.
We can't hear you, Jeff.
Figure that out. The town of Alford, every annual town meeting does a land move, right? So I think it's there's precedent, at least in my community, that there's a willingness to acknowledge Indigenous presence, Indigenous Rights Day as well. But I do think, given the climate of a lot of the things, I think we should do a thoughtful conversation that's not rushed, that's a dialogue. And maybe we just, we actually do discussion, listening, advertise for it, so we can actually get buy-in from the community. And upon further reflection. I strongly feel that we should maintain Indigenous Rights Day, but we are representatives, and this is a hot issue. So I think we should not ignore it, but I think we should engage in dialogue that's constructive.
So we could have a motion to continue with the dual naming.
I move that we continue indicating on our calendar that there is a holiday that is Columbus Day slash Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Further discussion?
Would you accept the change to just flipping it around, since they were here first, Indigenous people were here first? Would you mind doing it Indigenous people slash Columbus Day?
I just think since the holiday has been Columbus Day, what we're doing is we're adding the slash, I, one year it could be one way, one year it could be the other way. I don't want to make a big deal about it.
I would just like to step in and say, I've had conversations, because I have one member of my family who's shockingly stunning. No, it's not my son. This is my mother who raised me. You guys know how I think. You guys know how I, how I, how I deal with the world. She taught me every freaking thing I know, and she's so far right. And the conversation that I had, please, this is really, it's not funny, because this is pertinent to what we are going to be dealing with as a school committee over the next few years. I was explaining to her that because they don't have school choice in Rhode Island, my daughter-in-law is talking about moving from Providence, center of Providence, out to one of the suburbs, because they can't afford to go to, they can't afford to pay for private school for my grandson, who's in fourth grade. And the district that they're in now is good, but once they get into middle school, things start to fall apart in the center of Providence. So my mother's comment was, yes, and I'm sure they're going to be looking at curriculum to be sure that these people are not teaching their son all these terrible things that they're teaching today. And I was like, Mom, we were taught all this shit when I was, all this stuff, when I was like, like, this is back in the sixties and seventies, early seventies, right? You can delete that. Second rule. And I was shocked, but it also, her vehemence, this is a really smart, well-educated woman, her vehemence and her lack of hearing was so, she would have been surprised, but such a I think we have to be very careful, or else we're going to find ourselves in very, 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 as you have had experience. We're going to be finding ourselves in positions where the discussion is no longer going to be about the kids.
Okay, so just saying. Ready to vote? I think we're going to leave it as stated for now. And this can be revisited, so
I thought I made the motion. Bonnie made the motion.
And Nancy seconded.
Yeah, and then it looks like your amendment is not going forward. So for now, for this year. All right, so now, Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
Dennis?
No.
Okay, Bonnie?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Nancy? And Jane, yes, okay. So the other thing that I was asked to bring up is something that we had mentioned in our diversity and inclusion action plan, which was to introduce the land acknowledgement statement that Stephanie Graham has gotten approved from the Stockbridge Munsee Tribe. And I already spoke to Stephanie that I wasn't going to bring it up for a vote tonight, because again, as we know, this is an issue that some people are very passionate about, some people know nothing about.
She got approved for what?
From the tribe, what the language should be. For if we were going to do a land acknowledgement, the wording has been approved by the tribe. Okay, so I think that since it's been brought forward to us, we might be, we might think about having a community conversation about our approach to Indigenous people education in the district, if we were to introduce the land acknowledgement, which is getting more common at cultural events, how we would do it. But that But that, that in keeping with of our interest in having a conversation and understanding what our community wants and is ready for, that we would handle it that way. And it may be even, from what Nancy says, it may even be premature to bring it up at all. So do, I'd like to have just a little discussion on that. I don't think we will be voting on anything tonight, but I, I see Jeff.
I, I just think it's very important to emphasize why it's important to have the buy-in from the Stockbridge Muncie Nation is that it's, it's not their, it's not their community's fault that they were subjugated. And it's really important that the words that are used are not offensive and that do not perpetuate divisive, decisiveness and reopening words, right? My concern about a community conversation about this is that this is going to become a wordsmith document that nothing goes forward with. Again, I look at Alford, we do land acknowledgements every town meeting. And you know, I, I'd feel comfortable moving forward, but I would like to spend a little time reading the approved language from the Stockbridge Muncie and getting a little bit more information ahead of time. This could be very bad if it goes to community. Or you know what I mean? Like to the broader community and having it wordsmith.
I wasn't suggesting that it was, it was editable. It's either we take what they offered us as acceptable or we don't use it at all.
Yeah, but if like we have a community conversation and whatnot, it should not be subject to interpretation and modification and whatnot. And that's where it could get really dangerous and offensive to multiple communities, right? It's not just the dominant
Yeah.
culture kind of imposing their will about how it should be perceived. So. But I, I do think, I, I'm open to actually bringing this to vote, but maybe not tonight. I'd like to do a little bit more. And I'm prepared to make a motion. If anybody else wants to comment, there's something.
What would your motion be?
I move to have a vote on the, on the land acknowledgements, but for us to do it another day after we've had a chance to look at it, discuss it with stuff, be, understand the process that she went through with the Stockbridge Muncie and just that, that certain points.
Why don't we just put it on a future agenda instead of past meeting, even meeting.
Well, I'm feeling if we have it on the agenda, we need to, we haven't had public comment for a while here. And I strongly need, I personally feel I need input from our community about this.
So why don't we, I mean, going back to what Nancy said.
I think it sounds like we're not ready.
We're not ready.
Oh, no, no, we're absolutely not ready tonight. The question is how do we get ready? Who do we need to listen to? How?
So my motion is send us the, send us what was submitted by Stephanie Graham. And let us have a conversation with Stephanie and possibly somebody from the Stockbridge Muncie.
We don't even need a motion. Just get the information.
I will send it out to you. No problem.
Okay. So I would like to maybe table this as a future, a future agenda.
There, it's not, yeah, it doesn't call for a vote here. So it was just to open the discussion.
Okay.
And I've got, got my, I know what I'm doing when I get home tonight. Okay. And now we're getting to this item that Bonnie thought was important to mention tonight. So I'm going to give you some before for a bit.
Yeah. I, I, those of you who didn't get to go, the dedication of the statue, Elizabeth Freeman statue was, was quite incredible in the whole weekend of events. I have to compliment our superintendent in terms of the fact of how our district has been involved in it. When I first heard about Elizabeth Freeman, maybe 20 something years ago, it was this little book, Mumbet. And I thought part of it was like a whole fair, you know, story. It was like, I mean,
Like a folk tale?
Like so much of a folk tale, you know, you knew about in, in a lot of ways peripherally. And I think it is so wonderful. All of our kids know who Elizabeth Freeman is. With our district leadership, it's in the curriculum for all of our kids. That's not true elsewhere. The significance of what she did is quite incredible. And the fact, for those of you who weren't there, the mistress of ceremonies was Diane Patrick, Deval Patrick's wife. Deval Patrick was there. Our honor society was recognized. Our principal was recognized. And I wanted to recognize and acknowledge everything that's come out of the district leadership here so that we don't have any children who leave this district not knowing who Elizabeth Freeman is. And it's so wonderful because you now see people decide to volunteer at the stone store and I'm in town. And you see families going by, you see little kids being told by their parents or whoever who this woman is. And it's such an incredible story. And then to have one of the descendants there speaking and him knowing everything that went on in his family. Dennis was there as well. I was so pleased to see the teachers who showed up along with the district leadership. And people brought families. So I just have one, the, it was carried on CTSB. Is there any way, particularly the Saturday night one woman play that Juan Houston did? Because it is, it's wonderful. I just keep on watching it. Is there any way we can get that? So that if, if we wanted to show it at different points or in classes or whatever, it's a phenomenally done piece.
Yeah.
There is a way with so.
I'm sure we can get it.
I think CTSB puts a lot of their stuff to YouTube. So I think it's.
Right.
And then maybe we can let the principals know. I think it's probably would be too hard for the really little ones to follow. But for the others, it's just a compliment to our district. And Anuk Buzalian Sheffield neighbor won the contest, the essay contest about Elizabeth Freeman. I think, is it senior now or junior?
Senior, I believe senior.
So.
Read her, read her essay.
Yeah. And, and she gets a financial award with it. So it was, it's quite special. And that's why I wanted to have it included on the agenda. So it's a, going back to what Nancy said, it's another kudos to what our district does.
Thanks. Sorry, I couldn't be there. But I'm proud of us for what we did there. All right. So we have, would say the policies subcommittee has the first read directions here for you. And the other, we don't think if any of the other subcommittees met since our last meeting. So Dennis, can you instruct us on as to what we're supposed to do now?
You know, the, I don't think Jeff has anything for finance, right?
No.
And then the other one's gone. So. So let's do this for policy. These are all first reads that we have. So I think what I'm going to do is I've, I've got copies of all the first reads that we're going, that we were going to do.
Yeah, they're in the packet. They're in the packet.
Oh, I didn't know whether she got them in the packet.
Yeah, they're all in there. Dennis, was someone up great?
Well, my, my, my substitute packet maker.
Oh, okay. So they did get in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was a surprise for all of us.
And then, then what I'll do is you know, if they're in the packet, then, then we don't need to do anything with them right now. And what I'll do, Jeff, for you and Tara, I, I will actually send you a copy.
Oh, they have the packet.
We got the packet.
Oh, you've got the packets too, right?
Yeah, they've got it.
Okay. So you, you've got them all too. So, so these are first reads, which means that read it. And then when we get back for our next meeting, we'll actually then go over and decide whether we like them or whether we don't want to do them or whether we want to change something. Okay?
Yeah, I'd just like to comment that the policies that committee met and felt all of the policies made sense. But the one thing that we.
Well, actually, no.
Well, we tabled one about the hiring.
Right. Yeah, we tabled, we tabled one.
And, and we just got that clarified tonight by that, that yes, that is our policy. So I think, I don't know, I have to look and see if that's in the packet or if it hasn't changed yet. We'll add that. All right. So I guess I'll take a.
Future, future agenda items.
Yeah.
I, I had this like.
It's going to be a rivalry. Yeah.
And there's, it's very complicated. Okay. And then I want to make sure the, that we have on our next agenda, a discussion, these are the, our school committee and the Southern Regional Planning Board.
Yeah. Well, I think we, we came up with, we were getting into that direction in July. I think it was brought up that we should craft a letter and then summer being what it was, I didn't get any input. So I think maybe we need to do it in a meeting rather than people sending me things. Okay.
That's what I'm asking.
I got it. I think it's time.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Nancy? And Jane? Yes. And we did well.